Is the City of Wooddale's responsibility where the piping network is that takes the water out. Here, all piping network going into this pond is the responsibility of Royal Oaks, I mean of the City of Wooddale. However, if anything would happen particularly at depth on that pond, that retention pond, I'm sure the situation would change in terms of the liability for the City of Wooddale as well as the liability for definitely for Royal Oaks homeowners association. We don't have enough money to cover a multimillion dollar lawsuit regarding anybody where there's a debt and drowning on that retention pond. And that brings me to a greater issue, and that's the City of Wooddale has a lot of retention ponds in the area, and there may be some aerators in these retention ponds, and it may cause great problems for the City of Wooddale, which maybe they should look into because this situation here could be a monster for the homeowners association as well as the subdivision south of Joliet, Illinois. And basically, I submitting this newspaper report for your benefit so you can look at it and review it, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. A couple things before you move off, though. I just want to clarify a few things before we go further, if that's okay?
Yeah. Have any questions on what I've said?
Sure. So, I'm not sure, Mr. Kramer or Mr. Graff, which of you would speak to some of these items, but in terms of the retention pond, the question about aerators and safety, is it something that the city would make that request or not?
I don't know if I'd feel comfortable answering, and I might look to John Forrest to give me the nod on that since that's not a city property parcel. Is it that with the aerators running that the lake doesn't freeze?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. Well, I mean, if there's a situation that's creating something that could be considered a life safety hazard, then yes, I think we would, it would be within our rights to send a letter to the homeowners association.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we could do that.
Because I'm just a volunteer for a short time, and we're running the homeowners association with volunteers. And, you know, we, things get lost in the transition. People go out of town, and they forget to turn off the aerators, and they have to be advised that that's a serious matter.
Is the detention or Lake Royal, is that currently posted with no swimming signs?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
What they said in the paper, if you read the paper, the mother says, "I know that he shouldn't have been out there," but they, the homeowners association have turned, had the aerators off one year and on the next year and off, off and on. So, I mean, they would be liable, and so would maybe, maybe the town, and that's why I'm bringing it up.
It's something that I would like to verify with the city attorney, but again, you know, my off-the-cuff response would be that if leaving those on is creating an unsafe condition, that, you know, we could assist you in trying to get that resolved.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And secondly, I know you mentioned that when we do our capital improvement here, that the pond may need to be digged out deeper, it sounds like, but I don't believe that's something that the city would, would do, and I just want to get confirmation so then Royal Oaks can do their planning, their capital planning as well, and just clarify it now.
What we included in the CIP for this project is some additional money to study that pond. We don't have anything in there for construction. What I'm looking at, the pond was built in something like the early 60s, I found some original plans on it. It doesn't look like it was really designed for detention. It was more like a hole was dug in the ground, and there were certainly no detention requirements at the time. So, a study could be beneficial, not just for Royal Oaks, but for any watersheds draining into it in terms of determining, say, a restrictor size, an overflow elevation. We could maximize the storage in that pond, and I thought that could provide a regional benefit. If we have an engineer doing all those streets at the same time anyway, we could piggyback onto that project and have them look at the drainage, so I thought it was a reasonable request. I didn't think the dollar amount is too high relative to the overall cost of that project. And if we are looking at doing a lot of street improvements out there, we might want to get some more storage out of that pond to accommodate those improvements. So, it might be something even that the city needs, independent of what Royal Oaks needs. So, that's why we have the request in there to do that study. But again, there is no money for construction or for dredging the pond or anything like that that's earmarked in the CIP.
Okay, so, when it comes time to do this, it may be, we're going to do the study, but it may require that pond to be carved out deeper, which may be a Royal Oaks responsibility, correct?
I would think, yes. I would think changes to the piping in the pond, we would do as part of the, the street project, but any work to, say, lower the water levels or dredge the pond or something like that would probably be the homeowners association's responsibility.
Okay, thank you. And, let's see. Okay, so that covers my points of clarification. Before I recognize Alderman Police, you wanted to add something, right?
Alderman Winger. Dredging that pond is beyond us as a homeowners association. It can't, we can't afford that. It's $100,000 to do that project. So, what I'm trying to move into is retrofitting that pond with a piping network, maybe a bigger pipe, piping network or two pipes that would coordinate that water out of Royal Oaks Pond, through this area where there's a water vault, through this area up into the Park, Park Royal condominium's lagoon, Park Royal condominium's lagoon, and then root it out to 83 because it's impossible for us as a homeowners association to handle $100,000 to dredge that pond, plus the fact that where are you going to put the dredging? You mean, if you take it, if you dredge it out of there, you've got, you've got to dry it. You've got to dry the dredging out in order to lift it on a truck, and then whose yard are you going to use? Where are you going to put all that stuff? I mean, you're talking about dredging that pond to do a proper job. I'll ask just a question to the chief engineer here in the City of Wooddale, Dave Graff. How much does it have to be dredged?
I don't know that it has to be dredged at all.
Right.
But I'm saying if we wanted to get more storage out of there, out of that pond, you know, usually you get that by, by digging deeper, not by raising the water level, so. But again, the purpose of the study would be to answer those questions. We don't know, sitting here, what, if anything, needs to be done. The results of the study might just be to change some pipe sizes and have nothing to do with the actual volume of the, of the pond itself.
Well, in response to your remark there, I so hope it.
Well, that means I have Alderman Police, and then I want to wrap this up.
Dave, real quick on that, when you, we do the study, I mean, I know they're supposed to get curbs and sidewalks and all that.
Oh, sidewalks.
Well, at one point, some of the residents said they wanted sidewalks, some didn't. We're going to have to, if those sidewalks and curbs are going to flood out Royal Oaks, because I know we have the same type of situation over by Forest View and Harvey, where we're not going to put any curbs in and no sidewalks, when they do the study, we're going to find all this out. If we put in all this extra concrete, we're not just going to all of a sudden create a new flood plain over here, flood these people out, right?
Right. I think if, if we're looking at, and of course, this is, you know, a few years out, it's for fiscal year 2014 is our plan of construction, but if we're looking at putting in sidewalk, curb and gutter, filling the ditches, not only are we adding a lot of impervious area, but we're also taking away storage if we fill in those ditches. You know, not only wouldn't, would we not want to do that for the possible adverse flooding effect, we wouldn't be allowed to do that under the county stormwater ordinance anyway without providing detention somewhere. They're fortunate they have a pond right there, so if we need detention, we may be able to do it. Certainly, if we need detention for our project, the city would pay for that. We wouldn't expect the homeowners to pay for it for our project, but again, that's, that would all have to be looked at, and it's a few years out before we'll know the answers to that.
Okay, thank you, Frank, for coming and taking us through this whole thing.
Well, thank you very much. Any more questions on anything, the aerators or anything?
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and take each section. Any questions, comments? We're not going to go page by page, we're going to go section by section, so if you have questions, comments for section number two, I'd like you to go ahead and let me know that. Then, the only thing I had on this, I did say, and that's the sidewalk on Oak Avenue in here for $205,000 for Ward Four. And is there any questions, comments on this?
I will talk.
On section number two.
Yeah, I have one.
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
On page 16, the Deer Path Project, 408 Deer Path and Central Avenue Project Scope Work Include Completion of Payment, Removal and Replace With New Curbs, Gutter and Possibly Water Main Replacement and a Length Improvement of .03 Miles. Is that the, is that the project that the county is going in with us on that one? Or that they said there may be funding?
Addison Township?
Yes.
Right, that's the one where the, the east end of that road is unincorporated and is under the jurisdiction of Addison Township, although we have been told by Addison Township that they do not do curb and gutter, so I don't know how we would, you know, work out that part of it. There'd be some sort of a transition there, but yes, that is the road.
Have we notified them that this is a part of our project and that we will be seeking funding from them ahead of time?
We did, we did talk to them about this last year. I don't think we had the exact year penciled in, but they told us that whenever we're ready to do it, they were ready to do it.
Look.
May.
I have one question on it. So, we're looking at an expense of $1,133, and will some of the money, so will Addison Township be contributing towards that amount, or is this our share?
No, this only includes our part.
Okay.
It basically stops at the city limits.
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So, then I would direct staff to send a letter to Addison Township requesting to help fund this project, to the fact is that they asked us to help fund their project, so.
However, it sounds like this expense is just our expense listed here, not including any money from Addison Township, but Mr. Graff will let them know, hey, we're going to start this, and.
Yeah, and I can do an estimate for what their.
But may I, may I ask you this question? Is, on 2011, I know it's engineering for $13,000, is that the whole street, or is it just up to our boundary lines?
Well, actually, the, the engineering for that is planned to be done in-house, the $13,000 for the material testing and the survey, only our part, but that, that part would be very small additional to survey. If you have a survey crew out there anyway to do the rest of it, which is only a couple hundred feet, it would be very minimal, so it wouldn't be much of an upfront expense on our end.
Thank you.
Alderman Coles.
This project was scheduled in 2005, and it's been put off now, so I think it's time, we had a homeowners association, and they wanted, they wanted curbs but no, no sidewalks. And the reason that they wanted curbs is because the way the road is made now, if anybody drives off, breaks off pieces of road. So, this project was supposed to be done 2005, 2006, then it was pushed 2007, and 2008, and then it disappeared off the sheet, I think, in 2008, and now it'll come back. So, how about getting the project done? And I think that DuPage County, Addison Township will go along with us because we went along, we went along with Oak Meadow Drive. That's all I got to say.
Alderman Police.
Yeah, I've been talking about this for a while. On the previous page, page 15, is the Elmhurst Street reconstruction, which is projected for $2.7 million. And like I've been saying, we've been getting those bids at about 20% less than we've been estimating. My thing was, why don't we have an extra street engineered? If we're going to save basically $560,000 almost on Elmhurst, and this next project's 11, 1.1 million, we saved $220,000 there, that's a total savings of $800,000. If we, because the economy really hasn't turned around, so I think those bids could be aggressive again. We basically would get this second street for $300,000, and come the following year's budget, we don't have to put in $1,001,000 for that street, or we can move other projects up, if this is something that committee and council want to go for.
I guess my only comment on that would be, the street does have to be engineered, and really, staff is completely occupied with Elmhurst Street, which is a huge project, so if we, if Deer Path was going to be engineered, we would have to hire a consultant to do it, which we could do that, but that would be an additional expense.
Now, does a resurfacing require engineering?
No, and we did a partial resurfacing on Deer Path two years ago, so parts of it are in pretty decent shape. I mean, the parts that were in the worst condition, we patched up, and so they're a lot better than they were a few years ago.
So, if we find that there was cost savings on, on Elmhurst Street, we could actually start a fiscal year 2012 resurfacing without going through engineering. Is that correct?
Right, but I, I think what I'm hearing here is that they don't want it to be resurfaced, they want to reconstruct.
No, no, aside from Deer Path, I'm just mentioning on page 14.
Oh, just in general? Could we, we could see what the bids were on Elmhurst Street, and if we have additional money, we could quickly put together a resurfacing program, sure.
Okay, okay. I mean, is that in line with your discussion, Alderman Police?
Yep. Basically, you know, how much would it be for the, the engineering if we hired out the engineering here? I, I'm not sure what that fee would be.
10%.
So, about $100,000?
Yeah.
Because on the project on page 15, we have a construction supervision of $100,000 bill. Why, why are we paying $100,000 supervision if we're doing this one in-house? I'm just curious.
We're, we're doing the design in-house, but we do feel that looking at the scope of this project and our workload, doing full-time construction management would be beyond our staff's capabilities, so we're proposing that we hire a consultant to be resident engineer on that project.
So, it's going to cost $100,000 to supervise this project, same as it would cost $100,000 to.
To design.
To design a whole street?
To design that.
Doesn't that sound a little stiff on that price? $100,000 for supervision? I wonder how we can get that kind of job?
Are we getting?
Well, it's someone out there full-time for probably three months at least.
Wow.
Wow. Okay.
Now, I'm starting to get confused. Was Deer Path already engineered?
No.
No.
Is that cost embedded in the construction line item?
No, as it sits now, Deer Path is to be designed in-house.
Gotcha, okay.
And it would be designed this upcoming year and constructed the following year. If we're talking about moving it up a year, then we would need a consultant to do it because.
Right.
In-house staff is occupied with Elmhurst Street.
Gotcha. Okay.
Can I?
Sure.
Can I finish?
Sure.
I was just saying, if, if we have this engineered, and the bids don't come in 20% lower like they've been coming in, well, then you don't do the street, and that design is ready to go for the following year, which would leave you, you then, our staff would then be a year ahead for engineering, right, Dave?
They would, but, you know, again, we would have to have the time to get the engineering done.
Right.
And time for this construction.
Right, but if we hired, if we hired out for this one, I'm just saying, my, that was just my thing.
Right.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get a second street done for basically 300 plus an extra $100,000 in fees, so for $400,000, we get a street that would cost us $1.1 million. $700,000 sounds really good to me, if it's possible.
Yeah, but why spend $100,000 outside when you can resurface?
Well, that's another option, which is.
Without engineering and.
Which is a good idea also.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
All right. Now, I'm, I'm a little confused here. According to, according to what I'm looking at right now on page 16, 2011, you're surveying and inspecting, and are you not engineering that street?
We would contract out the surveying only, but we would do the engineering of it, and we would do the surveying, you know, this summer.
This summer for next year. That's part of the workload that they have this summer is to do that.
All right, well, I think, you know what? I have, we had this discussion before, and, and I just don't understand why we can't get the right direction the way we want. The price tags are coming in cheaper on these road projects, okay? I think in this capital project, there should be some, some funding to engineer another street if we can't do it in-house. We are losing the boat here, because you know what? If we come into, if we come into, say, our sales tax skyrocket, okay? Say, you know, we get a lot more sales tax, okay? We are losing the boat on a lot of these projects. First off, we aren't going out till late for projects for bids, so we're losing most of the time. I have to agree with Newsio on this one. I think in this capital project that there should be money put aside for extra street to be engineer. I'm not, I don't care where it goes, what ward, or anything like that. We should be, always be one street ahead. Therefore, if we run into a problem here, then just because we're one street ahead, that don't mean we're going to do it that year. We're one street ahead of the ballgame. We had had this conversation several times on this council. I liked to know from, from the city manager or Dave, and we had this discussion, and I thought we made it perfectly clear to move forward with engineering two streets, because someone asked me where we are losing the ballgame on what directions, we aren't giving you the right direction to engineer two streets, or how do we go about to get that accomplished that we can get bird prices for our bucks in this city?
To me, the beelis is all the resurfacing on page 14.
Well, I would say we're talking about reconstructing a street and engineering it. I mean, the problem is finding that $100,000 upfront to do it. I mean, it's not, I mean, we're talking like it's free to engineer it, and it's not free.
No.
But we blowing, we blowing the boat on a project that way would become, how much does School Street come under budget, or what, what was the price tag on School Street at the beginning?
It was about $300,000 under budget.
$300,000, we could have saved. For $300,000, I could have another street ready to go, or ballpark, or engineer, if there was more surplus or that came lower, and we could have a shorter street, a reconstruction for $300,000, not a full street, but a, we had small streets in this thing, and I could did a street for $300,000. I'm just saying, we meeting, we are losing the boat on, on bids here. We are. We are actually losing it. I understand the resurfacing, that's just dandy, okay? But we need to start going ahead of the ballgame and, and do streets. I mean, we're looking at Forest View, Forest Harvey and all that, four streets to be redone for, to, that we're going to look at down the line here, fourth street reconstruction, that we have no price tag on that, but if we stay ahead of the ballgame, do two streets, do it. I mean, take the $100,000 and, and engineer two streets.
Mr. DeSwaite.
We talked about this last year. Alderman Police brought it up, and there was virtually no discussion on the part of the rest of the council about his suggestion. If you want to get a head start on this, it's easy to do. Put another $100,000 in fiscal year 2011 and design Deer Path Road. When it's done, we can send it out to bid, and if we can get two streets for the price of one, we can do two for the price of one in 2011. If we can't, the project has been designed, the plans are on the shelf, we can dust them off and bid it out again in 2012. I mean, it's easy to do. It's $100,000 or so in terms of engineering design, we can do it in 2011 if you want to. Alderman Police brought that up last year, and there was no enthusiasm for that at all. And we told them then, we told you all then, if that's what you want to do, if you want to get a head start, you know, we don't have the resources in-house to engineer two streets of this magnitude, Elmhurst and Deer Path, but if you want to get Deer Path ahead of the game and get ready to go, put another $100,000 in the budget, and we've got money there, and we'll, we'll hire that out, we'll design Deer Path, and see how it shakes out when it's time to let the bids.
Alderman Cadala.
You know, I'm going to agree with Alderman Police and Alderman Wesley on this. I've got four streets in my ward that are, in chapter six here, is being unfunded and needed to be reconstructed. If spending $100,000, and maybe it's only a hope, but maybe there's a possibility of starting to do, you know, twice the workload or 1.5 times the workload a year, maybe we can start to create a hole where in the next few years, we can, we can plug these four streets in, because I don't think we're going to get to that this evening, the unfunded projects, but when we do, I'm going to push hard for those four streets. So, this is the best idea I've heard so far as to how we might be able to create that opening in, you know, in the budget and in the time to be able to pull it off. So, if you're, if you're looking for consensus here, I'm, I think I'm agreeing with, with this concept.
I'm going to, I'm going to caveat that with one comment, and I haven't talked to Dave about this. It might be that if you want to do Ed, Elmhurst and Deer Path the same year, you might also need to look at the possibility of building in some money for construction supervision as well. We might not have the staff to be able to, to do two at the same time, not only in terms of engineering, but the construction supervision. We won't know that for a while.
But one could supervise.
Well, we've got some other projects in here. This is not just these two. I mean, this, the engineering department is involved in a lot of these projects. So, I'm not saying that we have to do that, I'm just saying it might be required if you really want to hit it hard and do both of them in fiscal 2011. If you at least want to get a head start on it and get it designed and see how it shakes out, throw another $100,000 in there, we'll hire a consultant, we'll design it, and then we'll see what happens when it comes time to bid it out.
Alderman Coles.
I got one question. I thought we, we engineered Deer Path in 2006 because we were going to get ready to do that, and then we didn't have the money.
It was before my time, so I don't know any of the history. I know, I've heard that it was talked about doing that, I don't know how far that ever got.
I, I thought we had an engineering study on that already. Is there any way you can check? Looking at the old records?
I can, yeah, I can look at the old records, and I can ask around and see if anyone knows anything about that.
I'm almost positive, no. This goes back before some of these guys, these other Aldermen are on, the younger ones, but I thought we did that in 2006. Could you check?
I'll, I'll look into it and see if I can find.
Mine have, mine have an engineering study already done.
If I can add also, for some of these streets that we're talking about reconstructing, I mean, to do them too early, you're really losing money. Now, when we talk about, and I've, I know I've given the speech before, but when we talk about resurfing, resurfacing a street, you really can't do it too early because there's always some need for it and extends the life. When you're talking about reconstructing, you get the most bang for your buck by letting that street fall apart and get to the point where it's in the worst condition and then redoing it. So, when you're talking about moving these things up, you know, it's not a cost saving. I mean, you could have that money, you know, if you have the money available, it's fine, you can have it sitting there earning interest, you don't lose the money. You do lose out rebuilding those streets early, so I guess I would put that as another caveat out there.
Right.
I got it.
Okay, before I call on Alderman Police and Alderman Cadala, any other comments? Okay, I want to go with Alderman Cadala, then Alderman Police.
Yeah, Dave, I agree with you. I, I don't think I'm, I'm suggesting we do this indefinitely and double our workload till the end of time. I think we, we may have an opportunity for, during a downed economy to, I'm, I was honest before, I'm trying. I'm trying to find a hole, a place where there's time and money to get these four streets in that aren't currently programmed in the next five years. That's my goal out of this, and I think I'll piggyback onto their ideas as at least one way to possibly make it happen. But I agree, I don't think we should do it forever. Because we'll be far too ahead of the game, and then we'll have streets that are being torn apart that don't need to be. Thank you.
Alderman Police.
Right, once the economy turns around, Dave, you know those prices are going to go right back up. And, and we're talking about wasting money. I mean, some streets are getting patched, resurfaced now that, you know, you said Deer Path had some resurfacing two years ago. So that money. It, it, whether we do it this summer or the following summer, that money is gone too. So we are, we are wasting some money along the way here. And I agree, we cannot do two streets every year. I'm just watching all these prices come in on the bids. Twenty percent, fifteen percent, I think I saw one or two at twenty-five percent. That's all, that's the only reason I brought it up.
And I'd say, with, in terms of the patching of the street, I mean, it's something that needed to be done to just hold the road over. And we were able to do that at a, at a pretty low price. So I, um, you know, I stand behind the decision to do that. But in terms of the pricing, I mean, you know, nobody has a crystal ball. Nobody knows what construction price are going to be a few years from now. They could be higher, they could be lower. I think we assume like a three percent increase every year when we project these things out. But, you know, obviously, we have, we can't sit here now and say for certain what they're going to be a few years down the road.
Okay, and, and I agree. And, um, I'm just going to, I think what is probably needed on your end is a vote here, whether we're going to add the engineering, if it's not already done, to Deer Path. And not necessarily setting a policy right now, um, but clear direction on which way to go with the engineering of Deer Path. Does that, um, should, should I do that here? Is that what you want?
What I think, but we, we would need to do, we would need to, if we're going to talk about building it this upcoming year, you know, upcoming year, we would need to do the engineering immediately. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to start the engineering May first. I mean, we would need to start it right now.
Is there still?
Okay, um, it, but it, you would send out the engineering, so you would start that process now?
Right, we would, we would get a consultant on board now to start the engineering of Deer Path to get it built in this upcoming construction season.
So that would actually be in this budget year?
It sounds like that's what we're talking about here.
Is there money in the, okay, so, so there is money available. So I would say that that would be the, um, and is there time available to get it to an engineer on your, on your staff?
It would not, not to be done in-house, there isn't time, but to be done with a consultant. Yeah, it'd probably be a later in the year project, but it could still be done.
Okay, okay, so unless there's some quick, brief commenter question, then I'm going to, I'm going to call a roll on it.
Four.
Okay, there is something that you want to comment on before I do this? Okay, Alderman Cadala.
This motion and this roll should be pending Alderman Coles' recommendation to make sure that there's nothing already designed anywhere.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
One question, uh, one thing. I just pulled up the street study that we did in two thousand seven. That street is at sixty-four percent. In two thousand seven. So you look at two thousand, so it's more than three more years deteriorated.
But, but we did a lot of the patching on Deer Path, so it's been improved greatly since then.
All right, well, anyways. I say we go ahead, if there's money available in this year's budget, and I think we did because some, like I said, School Street was three hundred thousand dollars less. There's a hundred thousand, take out School Street project, engineer it and, and see where we go. No one says we have to build through the street.
Sure, Mr. Douthat?
Go back to page seven for a minute.
Page seven?
Page seven. At the beginning of fiscal year eleven, we're going to have four million dollars in the bank.
Is that reserved though?
That's, it's, that's free cash in this capital improvement pro, uh, fund. So if you want to take a hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year ten and do the engineering, we've got more than enough to handle that. It's not a fu, it's not a function of affordability. We've, you know, it's a function of timing, but if you're worried about being able to afford that in fiscal year two thousand ten, don't worry about it. We've got the money.
Okay. So with that being said, um, while I do believe that probably the best approach here is to do the streets that are planned on for reconstruction each year and then fill it in with resurfacing, resurfacing with extra funds left. It's efficient, and I believe we can get the, the best, um, cost savings there. I'm going to make them, with that being said, I am going to make the motion to the contrary to, uh, a motion that if there is, uh, if there is no engineering plan in place to, uh, for the Deer Path Road Reconstruction Project, then to go out and amend the budget for the oh-nine, twenty-ten budget to, uh, to allow for engineering this current fiscal year for the Deer Path Road Construction Project. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And it, I'm just going to add to it, and, and we estimate the cost is about a hundred thousand dollars. Okay, so I'm adding that to the motion. Does a second or agree?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, um. Should, should I do a roll call on this, Mr. Douthat? It doesn't matter. Okay, um, before I do, I'll in favor on the question, Alderman Ray Wesley.
So you're talking for engineering for.
Deer Path.
Construction of what year?
Twenty, um, twenty-ten and eleven, but the engineering has to take place in this fiscal year, this current one, if it's going to happen next year.
Okay. Just so, just so the townships inform of what's going on on Deer Path, to make sure that they're totally informed.
And the question, Alderman Dunzeal.
Yeah, I, actually, before the meeting, I talked to, uh, Finance Director Wilson. I was asking him, I know he didn't have the information here, but I should have thought about it ahead of time. Just curious what, what our expenses were on the fiscal year we're in right now on, uh, our CIP. How much do we spend? Do we spend all of, let's say, the two million dollars? Do we spend only one point seven out of the two million? Hypothetically, I don't know the exact number. And I know we did some extra, there were some drainage studies and whatnot. I was just curious if how much money was saved or do we spend exactly what we budgeted last year?
We saved a hundred. I don't know exactly how much, but we saved.
Okay.
I don't recall.
I don't recall any bid that we got that came in over what we had estimated. Every bid that we sent out for construction projects were under budget.
Right, and that's why I asked him. I figured, I know we spent close to, I think, two hundred thousand on drainage studies and whatnot. And I was just curious how much we saved on the projects, and did we come out ahead?
Every single project that I remember this past year came in under engineer's estimate when we opened the bids.
There's a motion and a second. Um, anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, opposed? Motion carries? Then, uh, with that being the case, is there any other, uh, questions on section number, let's see, number two? Alderman Police.
Yeah, on, uh, page eleven. I think I asked this once before, Dave, but I don't ever remember getting a, an answer. We're redesigning this Wood Lane Court Pond. Wasn't this the, that developer that's trying to get developed more? Isn't it the developer that was supposed to put this in and fix it? Why, why are we spending ten thousand in, uh, survey and design and another twenty thousand in construction when this should have been taken care of by the guy who put in the, the road and everything? I don't, I don't recall.
Well, there's, there's two ponds, we haven't spent any money yet, but there's, there's two ponds out there. There's the, um, Ethan Woods Detention Basin.
It's in the back.
And then there's the Wood Lane Court Basin, which is owned by the city.
Yeah, but I thought these guys, there used to be a wet bottom pond, and then because of what they did, it became dry bottom pond.
Right, they made some alterations when they put in their pond, and they put in a connecting pipe between the two. And they did it, as I understand it, at the direction of the city or at the direction of the city's engineer at the time to do this. Now, I've received, uh, a lot of questions about these ponds that nobody seems to ever see any water in them. So the purpose of some of this work is to try and determine that. Now, the simplest solution is we can just run in an inlet pipe from the street into that, um, Wood Lane Court Pond. We could probably get some water in it, and there'd be no real engineering expense to do that. However, if we wanted to look at a way of maybe doing a better job of combining those two ponds, maybe taking out that berm, that strip of land between the two of them and opening them up, I think that would involve a more, would involve a more detailed study. And I'm not exactly sure myself which direction to go on this, because I know it's been talked about a lot. I know in the past, Bennet's looked at the same question. I saw a report by them a few years ago, and their conclusions weren't really definitive either. So we have the project in here. I think we need to refine the scope a little bit, decide exactly what we want to do. We haven't spent any money on this, but it all stems from the concern of no one's ever seeing any water in those ponds. And we know we have flooding problems downstream of there.
Okay.
Alderman Coles.
All right. On this, on this retention pond. Seeing that I saw it being built, and as Wood Lane Court being built. Uh, them two ponds were six and seven lot, which we own lot eight. We also own, we own them three lots. Before the retention, when the retention pond was put in, in Madonna's property. The head engineer of Bennet's says, we're going to shut off six and seven, and we're going to bypass it. But we will put a little drain in in case water gets in it. Well, they shut, they changed the system of the pipe which comes in back of the homes next to the forest preserve and had the water coming down from central to the retention pond that's in Madonna's property. And it used to come down and go into six and seven, because at that time, there was no, no retention there. Now, that is what they did, Bennet's did, because he said that the other pond, the other retention pond that we built on Madonna's property would take the amount of water that we had to move over in the area. So that's why that, that retention pond, them two retention ponds are always empty. No matter how much it rains, they have very little water in it. Now, there's a drain that used to go in there that was down by this, on a side, street, which came down to the curb, and that went into the retention pond. At one time, that retention ponds had, uh, agitators to keep the water, because the water used to get stale. And they had them in it, they took them out, because they decided that the retention pond at Madonna's would take care of all the water. But people have complained in the area that there's never any water in it. And the Stormwater Committee has also said something about it, uh, to me. And I says that Bennet's, who was the engineer, had closed that off, because he said that you didn't need it anymore. But they do need it, and I don't care what they said. It would help Royal Oaks to pull back, because it used to, it's, it used to take, uh, it used to fill up almost right up to the top. And, uh, that would help Royal Oaks from the water going down that way. They made the little retention pond at the end of the street smaller by building a house there. I don't know how that house ever got up there, because it used to be bigger. That was a retention pond too. So this is what they have to do, and I think I talked to Dave Graff about it. And I explained to him that, that, that would have to do. And they did have a pipe that came down in back of the houses between the Wood Lane Court and the forest preserve. So they blocked it off, and they've also blocked off the one that was on the street and covered it up. Because at one time, there was a big piece of cement pipe that was sitting in the middle of the, until we got that out of there. But that's, that's your, that's the thing about the retention pond on Wood Lane Court. And I suggested that he take an engineering study and see if he could get something done on it.
What I, what I would suggest with this one is give, give staff some time to look at this ourselves. See if it's something that we want to take on. I'm not a fool to study this myself. You know, I don't know what the timeframe is to look at it. Let us, let us take a look at it, um, see what we need in terms of survey or other resources. If you think we want to have a consultant or more detail, we'll get it, we'll bring it back to City Council, and we'll talk about it more at that time.
Okay, so we're going to have it in here, but you're going to try it on your own first, okay?
Talk about it some more, we've done some more investigation on it.
Okay, that sounds good. Any other question? Alderman Police?
On the next page. We've got, uh, more drainage studies every year. Before we start putting the fifty thousand in every year, shouldn't we decide what we're going to do with those unfunded projects first? Why, why are we going to keep doing studies if we're not going to decide what we're going to do with, uh, that's fifty thousand dollars?
Well, a couple of comments. First of all, that's a placeholder. That doesn't necessarily commit you to doing any studies. We're just putting that in there for planning purposes. Second of all, we might come up with a study on an area of town where we see a better cost benefit ratio than what we've seen so far. And I'm not sure we just want to zero it out, just because North Cedar doesn't have a good cost benefit ratio, and South Cedar doesn't. And we don't think that, uh, Catalpa does, doesn't mean that there might not be a project down the line that really has a good bang for the buck. And, and again, we're not, we're not identifying specific areas here. We're just putting some numbers in as placeholders.
Okay.
And if you come down the line and say, hey, we've got an area we think we need to take a look at, at least there's money in the budget. Doesn't mean we have to spend it.
That's what I, that was my concern, they were just going to do a study in.
Well, it's, you know, as needed. We just want to make sure we, the money's there in case you guys want to do something like that.
If I can add also to that, and we would only do it too if the Stormwater Commission had put forward a project. This would all go through them first. And, and as, as we sit here now, I, I don't believe they have one that they're looking to do right away. But, you know, things come up during the year, but it would go through them first and then the City Council.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Page fifteen on page nineteen. Can you tell me why from two thousand ten, thirty-five thousand, six hundred ninety dollars were for sidewalk replacements, you know, for defect, and how we jumped to fifty-two thousand on that? Do we fall behind on projects, or why such a big high jump on that?
Yep. There again, it was just the low bid. The bid came in lower, and I think we had fifty thousand dollars in the original budget. We wrote up our program, the bids came in less than that. So it's like some of the other projects, we just have money that's going to carry over.
Do we? This is actual what we spent in two thousand ten? So capital project money rolls into the next year? Okay.
I thought everything goes down to zero, but I don't see it.
Everything we save goes right back into that cash at the beginning of the year.
For the same project, so?
With, some to you guys in terms of how you want to allocate it, but if we had.
Had, uh, if we had put in the CIP in, in two thousand ten, fifty thousand dollars for sidewalks, and the bids came in in thirty-five thousand, that extra fifteen thousand just shows at the end of the year is extra cash.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else on section two? Okay, with that, Ms. Schultz, would you like a five-minute break before we try and knock out the other four sections? Okay, let me know when, okay. Section three, the only comment I have on section three, which is for, uh, those of you watching, is building and grounds expenses. And the, the famous wall in City Hall, the glass wall, just a, a question, I understand, uh-oh.
What page are you on?
I take it I shouldn't have asked that question yet. I don't know, let's see. I'm looking for the page.
Page.
I'm looking for the page.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay.
I think it's thirty-five.
Thirty-five it is, yes, it is. Okay, and I read the description, and I understand that there's a problem with, the wall is noted on page thirty-five. And I guess, you know, if this is the only solution, I'm going to rally behind it and support it. But is there like a different-